Everybody ready? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the West Fargo City Commission Meeting, October 7th. Please join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the people for which we're a nation, and our government.
First order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda. Chair recognizes Commissioner Olson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move Item F from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdevig. Been moved in second to move Item F on the Consent Agenda, Resolution approving contract, and contractors bond in sewer water storm and street improvement District 1325 to the Regular Agenda. We'll move it to Item Number 6. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is Item C, approval of the minutes of September 16th, 2019. They have been distributed. They're on Pages 2 through 4.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdevig. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Thorsted, second. Been moved in second to approve the minutes of September 16th, 2019, as distributed. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is Item D, building permits. Building permits report has been distributed and is in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdevig. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Been moved in second to approve the building permit report as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the Consent Agenda. Item A is bills. B, C, D, and E are all games of chance at various places within the community. Item F has been moved to Regular Agenda 6. Are there any other additions that you'd like to make on the Consent Agenda? I will be approved. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jurdevig, second. Been moved in second to approve the Consent Agenda with the amendment of Item F moving to the Regular Agenda of Item Number 6. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the Regular Agenda. Item Number 1 is 5:30 PM is a public hearing and first reading for the rezoning of Eagle Run Plaza 9th Edition. Mr. Solberg will be presenting. At first, we'll do the first reading. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor and Commissioners. Tonight, we're reviewing application for Eagle Run Plaza 9th Edition. This application was received to accommodate light commercial development. Property currently sits in a large platted parcel. However, it was zoned PUD with sort of a concept prior to this that never fully was realized. So it sat vacant for quite a number of years. The applicant here wishes to split this large lot into nine smaller lots with cross access and utility easements, which would be provided on the plat. Access road and separate services to each lot kind of create a unique situation. Lot had previously been zoned PUD, as I stated. The West Fargo 2.0, as it looks at it, considers it a core retrofit growth sector, envisioning it to develop primarily with mixed-use development patterns. The light commercial district, however, provides all these uses and gives the ability of the Commission to review it, both for building and site plan approval within the CEO corridor overlay district. So any development on the site, you'll see again when you get to review the building plans at a later date. Access is proposed to 32nd Avenue West and 9th Street. May be limited. We're looking at a potential traffic study there that would require approval by the City Commission within the final plat. Both 9th Street West and 32nd are arterial and collector roadways. Access easement width throughout the plat will adequately accommodate a road and city infrastructure. We did note in our staff report that we should either have connectivity through sidewalk or path through that access easement, so potentially widening it, or it could be addressed through a subdivision agreement, which we've done at Cashwise. So as each one of those lots in front of Cashwise develops, we just require connectivity through the sidewalk so people can kind of traverse throughout there without having to get in their car at Cashwise, get out, and park somewhere else so they can kind of move throughout there. And also, there's connectivity to a nice path network on 32nd, so want to make sure that if you're on a path, you can come in and out of there pretty easily. Property owners within 150 feet were notified. No comments have been received to date. After September 10th, 2019 meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to review the application and are hereby recommending approval of the application with conditions as noted in the staff report. Again, tonight is a public hearing, first reading. We would come back with final plat when that's done for a second reading as well for zoning. So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Is there any questions for Mr. Solberg? All right. We'll close the Regular Agenda at this time, and we'll move into the Public Hearing. So we are now conducting the Public Hearing for the rezoning of Eagle Run Plaza 9th Edition. Is there anyone in the crowd that would like to speak to this item? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this item? Again, Public Hearing for the rezoning of Eagle Run Plaza 9th. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we close the Public Hearing. Go back into the first reading. Again, Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Solberg?
Just a quick question. I know this is early in the process, but is there any indication as to what they're considering putting in there? It looks like they got nine lots. Is it an office park?
Yeah, essentially, an office park is what they're looking at doing. Tomorrow night at Planning Commission, we're actually reviewing the first set of plans, which would be on, kind of circling it on the screen here, this southwest corner, is a childcare center, like a larger childcare complex, really nice-looking buildings. As we look at that plan, we looked at, you know, sort of more mixed use. We also have such a large emphasis on commercial and making neighborhoods sort of more sustainable within them, that you can go to your childcare center, go to your chiropractor, go to your dentist, maybe work in that same section. So there's really like this emphasis, overemphasis, I think, on commercial as opposed to making sure everything's mixed use up and down there. Although we'd like that everywhere, it's not always usable, so I think it's a good project. And there's also, one thing on this particular piece of land that sort of gets in the way is there's a big easement of exhale energy on the north side of the slot going across 32nd that makes kind of bringing development to the front sort of difficult here. And we'll see that soon, so for you guys.
Is there some questions for Mr. Solberg? Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Will be approved the first reading. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thorsted. It's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of the rezoning of Eagle Run Plaza 9th Edition. Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing then, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Item Number 2 on the Regular Agenda is to review the parking reduction request for Oak Ridge Office Park. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioners, this request before you is to consider a reduction in parking. This is a procedure outlined in the city's off-street parking regulations, Section 4-450 of City Ordinances. We allow for a reduction in parking when they can justify that the requirement is excessive and/or a lower demand is supported. The Oak Ridge Office Park creates a unique challenge in that there's no on-street parking really available in the private street system. However, it's also a unique development in terms of form and use. As you've seen, if you've driven through this area, each office is sort of intended to be more inclusive. It's not typically something you have a lot of visitors coming in and out of. So that's how the applicant here is proposing to justify the reduction in parking. The applicant here has built one of the buildings already, and in that building review, they actually combined some lots, so they were going to share parking with another building that they were going to build at a later date. And that building at that time was a smaller building. Now, with their future growth plans, they decided that they want to do a bigger building for that second building. So then that increases, through my review of the permit, a higher parking demand. Now, that higher parking demand, they can no longer, they can't meet that because they didn't have enough parking on there. So what they're asking tonight before you is that you consider a reduction in parking. With the existing building and the new proposed building, the parking requirement would be 45 stalls. They are able to provide 35 stalls, and I've included their sketch that they have for you there. The total amount of office units in the full build of the proposal of both the buildings is 26 units with associated break rooms, lobby and conference rooms. Staff, as I said, we don't have adequate justification within what we typically use, the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual. Within that, the office use category really is just, it's 160,000 square foot office building is their average size, so it just doesn't relate to this smaller kind of style. So what I've put in my staff report here, and I'll just kind of repeat that, as I said, we don't have adequate justification. However, we would offer that the applicant's ability to control the amount of vehicles on the property and the nature of their business may be adequate for the Commission to consider a reduction. If this is the direction the Commission would like to take, staff recommends the reduction be accompanied by an agreement, which is drafted by the city attorney at the expense of the applicant, to specify the conditions to which the reduction is approved. We would then record this agreement against the property, therefore protecting the city against future owners, so that the owner, when they do their due diligence on a property and see that title has that agreement on it, they would know that they have a reduced amount of parking. As I stated, full buildout of these two buildings, they would have 26 office units. They're proposing 35 parking spots, so they would have enough for each office. Typically, our office requirement, we consider that it's going to have visitors coming and going. What they're saying here is that they don't have a lot of visitors. The applicant is here, as well as the developer, to answer any questions you might have on that. I feel that if we were to approve it, I'd be comfortable with that because we would record it against the property. Other communities oftentimes will do this in a conditional use permit process where they get that conditional use permit and record it against the property. So I'm sort of mimicking what they would do in this case. So with that, no public hearing. I'm available for any questions, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Commissioners, any questions for you?
Thank you, Tim. So this Eagle Ridge, I just want to get a good grasp so I know where we're talking about. We're talking out by Cashwise, you're correct?
Yes, sir.
West of the Brutus Bar there?
Yes.
Where all those other little places are?
Yep, the commercial condos.
Right. So I'd go out there now for some business, and my biggest concern is there's not, to me, it doesn't appear that there's enough parking anywhere out there, let alone in this place. And those roads are so, so, so small. I don't know that, Chief, if we could get a fire truck through there, as it is today, I don't think we could get a fire truck even around that road. How can we think that this is going to be possibly big enough to justify going down on parking, let alone, I'm thinking, there should be more parking out there?
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. I, we, if the road is free and clear, we can get a fire truck through there. We don't allow a development unless we can actually get that through there. We do have a simulation model that will run that. If it's clogged, it's a private road, so we do have some issues with that. That's something that we've sort of had to adjust a little bit in private access easement throughout the community, Cashwise, Family Fair, which is...
It was a little different though, Tim, because they're...
Yep, but they're private roads that we aren't able to, you know, we can go in there and, I think, I don't want to speak for now, but...
I would be concerned if there was a fire truck trying to del. I, if you're that damn good of a driver, I can hardly get my pickup around those corners. If you can drive a big ladder truck around there, you need to be in another business.
We actually have taken our ladder truck through there. That gets through there without any obstacles in there. If we had cars parked in there, of course you could...
Can you get through with a straight driver without getting out, backing up, and turning and going around?
Yep. We actually just did that about two months ago.
Is this, and, so you're okay with this?
Yes.
Okay. And Tim, on the same subject, is this, you mentioned nurses, I'm sorry. Is that okay? Please say. You mentioned nurses. This going to be like a clinic or something?
No, I took that to understand that it's a nursing station for their employees.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
And I, again, I could let you, let the representative of the applicant speak to that.
I'd like to hear from him actually about...
Yeah, if you don't mind. I'd rather them answer questions about the inside of it.
The concern is the parking.
Thank you.
I'm like, when Andrew came to me, he's the owner representative, and he could speak next, but he'd come, had a plan, and originally, how we laid this thing out as tight as it is back there, this is the financial model that works from a return on investment and without, again, trying to expand into another lot, because we've had this laid out to where we can make the parking requirement, but again, now we're eating up another lot, you know? So we're kind of trying to find the happy medium here to where he feels that his business, where he's at today and where his growth is going, can still be met and still financially make sense.
What are you planning to do with the snow when we get a, if we get a half decent snowfall, three, four, five, six, seven inches, there's no way, there's nowhere to put the snow, period.
So the plan, I mean, as this thing transpires, is the pond that just became Oak Ridge 18th is going to be where all the snow is going to be taken to now.
And don't get me wrong, just so you know, I'm not picking on this project. I'm actually talking more about the projects that are already out there, where there is, I mean, I drive my truck, like I said, to go to a chiropractor, and it's full. Everything out there is full.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that in today's, it's full because there's just so much going on out there. So fast forward, two, three years from now, and I'm hoping that the mix is where it needs to be, half those vehicles out there are probably construction-related vehicles. Doesn't make it okay.
That's what you're saying.
But in today, if you drive out there, just like the fire truck, I mean, it's bad today. Two years from now, as we finish the development, I feel we're going to be, you know, where we need to be from a parking standpoint. And me and Tim have been playing a lot with this parking thing, and that's where, without getting cute and fancy on this parking, I feel like the easy ask here is to ask for a reduction without trying to make a cross-parking agreement with the neighbor and stick in parking lots and parking spaces in the backyard. You know, it can be done, but the easy ask here, and, you know, if the owner feels that, you know, his growth and business is going to be met, I think we can find the happy medium, you know? And the angle we took was, you know, the office spaces, you know, the employees, and I'll let Andrew talk a little bit about where they're at and how they're going to be, but...
Mr. Graham, I have a question of you.
Yep.
So it's a private road. So how do you, as the developer, do you enforce no parking on the street? I mean, do you have a security?
We have nothing besides the signs up, and then obviously, I'm going to rely on, you know, Unit A, if there's somebody parking in front of their door, you know, they're either calling me, the associate, you know, I mean, I guess, to date, it hasn't been a problem. I don't necessarily have the end-all besides common sense.
I drove it last week, and I would agree with you. A lot of the congestion, if we can use that term, is a lot of contractors out there. You've got a lot of people working.
And it's just, it is tight. And again, that was kind of the, you know, how we set out to do this, was tight quarters, keep the square footages tight on these projects, so the land and specials don't get out of hand.
And Mike, you're absolutely right. I did not take contractors into consideration, because you are right, there are a lot more contractors than there are, so hopefully you're right, that will slow down.
I have one more question. When the original designs were submitted to planning and zoning for two buildings, okay? Now, the owner, your customer, has decided that he wants one of the buildings much bigger. Am I to understand the footprint stayed the same, and we're going to up?
Two-story.
We're going two-story?
Yep.
And with that business model that the other gentleman that's with us this evening, Tim, you had a dialogue with Mr. Graham and this gentleman with regard to how many people are going to work in there once you're, you know, you're adding a second floor, and that's all part of this whole discussion with 11 reduced parking spaces?
Originally, no, because we had met the parking requirement based on a single-story pay.
Right.
We sat there and went about it. Again, financially, it doesn't make a lot of sense. So then, with that a story, all of a sudden, it makes sense from a buildable, you know, office, you know, there's, so then, we went back and said, okay, well, now we need X more parking spots, but here we sit today with, you know, a net 10 short, so what's our options, you know?
Thank you.
This might be the easiest.
Mr. Shockley, I'd like to call on you, please. With regard to the type of agreement that Mr. Solberg is comfortable with, would you state a little bit by nature of, is, are they, are they enforceable and the like, please?
Yeah, thank you, Commission President. Yes, these types of agreements, we have, we've only done a few relating to parking, but it's mostly the use of properties. So we create a parking restriction agreement, and we make it a covenant that runs with the land, meaning the city can enforce it, and then any future buyer of the land would be obligated to that. And we can, usually, we'll put in some type of restrictions, like if they don't comply with it, they can't get a building permit or any type of other permit. So we try to put enforceable language in there. But overall, yes, we can enforce it, and we have utilized them from time to time.
Mr. Solberg, have you and Mr. Graham discussed this, that particular subject?
Yeah.
And Mr. Graham is in agreement with that?
Yes.
Gentlemen, Mr. Jurdevig?
Yeah, I would just have one question. So this is the proposed parking map that's right here, correct?
Yes.
So if I'm looking at spots number 3, 31, and 32, if I'm looking at it correctly, you can't guarantee those are even usable spots. I mean, if somebody stops in spot number 4, no one's going to get to spot number 3. I mean, you're parking cars to where you're trapping them in, and they can't actually even get out of the spot. Because if somebody's parked in 32 and 31 and 30, I can't leave the office until 31 and 30 leave before me. So that doesn't really seem like usable parking if we're trapping the person in the spot.
I can give you one perspective on that, because where I go, the actual chiropractor and his assistant takes those two spots, and they're always there first in the morning, so, I mean, it...
Sure. I mean, I mean, that's...
It could work, it's ju, it is, like...
I think a weak situation. We get a sand, it's a twenty-year-old, second.
Yeah, but I think that was actually said that that wasn't the case in terms of this proposal, so...
So I'm just saying, in general, those fast, bad parking spots. You're hearing from a both standpoint, I believe.
So we're sort of in a unique situation on this development, and I'll take the current Commission back to a little bit of history that Commissioner Thorsted and Commissioner Simmons will recall. This property was considered to be sort of a difficult property to develop. They were initially going to do some residential homes in here. The developer really wanted to do apartments. There's a tremendous amount of specials, special assessments on this property, so they're trying to financially make something work, and that's how this whole development initially got approved. So we've had to be really creative on things, and we have a provision within our off-street parking regulations that require that parking space needs to be accessible, et cetera. It's sort of one of the few gray areas that we have. If I were looking at a general, you know, has a lot of visitors, I wouldn't really count those, and to be honest, I don't really count them. In this reduction, I don't, they can work, but it's not ideal. They do meet our requirement of nine and a half, or nine wide by 18 and a half deep, but that's about the extent of it. The part of it is here is that we're trying to look at unique development pattern in a unique situation of land, and, you know, it's, this is kind of why we do this. It's for you guys to scrutinize this. My sniff test tells me that there's probably, instead of 35 spots, maybe 32 that'll actually be used, and that still might just be adequate for the 26 office units that they have.
So my only, I'm sorry.
Question for Thorsted.
My only other question, Mike, if we go through with this, and maybe I should be asking Tim, both you or whoever, but if we run into problems down the road, is this a fixable item that we can, or once this is done, is it done? I mean, are we...
Well, I think I can answer that. Like, is it fixable, like, can we tear buildings down?
Oh, no, we can't.
No, you know, so that's where I was saying, well, I don't want to get cute and start having to put parking behind of the buildings, you know? Because again, like we said, what's the actual, is that you, good, use of space, parking? So I think yes, I think if we wanted to, we could find a way. There's probably cross-parking agreements with the neighbors that could be, you know, gone after, but I just don't, I think, today, if you guys are comfortable, it could be the easy one, and if we put some restrictions on the land moving forward, I think it just is what it is, you know? It's probably the best answer I can give for you today.
Mr. Thorsted.
A couple of questions. How do you handle sanitation in this area? Is each, is it a...
Each one has their own trash can, actually.
Okay, this is fairly, fairly large-sized office. I'd take more than a garbage can. Are we going to get that, are we going to get our garbage truck in there?
So this is treated like a residential neighborhood. I want to say it's Monday mornings, everybody puts their trash bin out there. Originally, this was two lots, so I would envision there being a total of three canisters there on a Monday, you know? Is that adequate? I want to say yes, you know, because everybody else has one out there, you know? So I would argue that one dump, one canister for my house is inadequate, but I make it work, you know? So I, I don't think that we want to start putting condensed trash things out there if that's what you're insinuating.
In my opinion, this is kind of a high-intensity use compared to everything else that's out there. Everything out there looks really nice, but all of a sudden, we're putting on pretty large, compared to its neighbors, office building back in there, and now we're saying, well, it can get by with the same services, and I, I think, if this was a city street, firstly, I'd be against this, but since it's a private street and you can control it, and you have to live with all your neighbors, and they're going to have to work it out, I'll be able to go along with it. But I think you're very creative on coming up with parking spots when you count in the garages, and then cars parked behind that is parking spots, and like Commissioner Jurdevig pointed out, three in a row, you're going to have to have a lot of coordination there. I guess I've had employees that they don't coordinate like that. They want to be able to come and go as they want, so customers as well. But at any rate, because of the, a private operation, the only thing, I think I talked to Tim about this before, I just want to make sure that all the neighbors understand and that anyone else understands, this is not a city street, this is not a city parking lot, this is a private operation, and therefore, any maintenance, if there's problems with snow, if there's other issues that have to be handled by the ownership group.
They become part of the association as they buy. I mean, they're, you know, a member of the association, you know, the second they buy. So that's all assigned as the decorations of the lot, you know?
And like you say, I hope they don't park on that street, but they may not have, they may not see a choice, and you're going to have to deal with that. I just don't want them calling us and then complaining, can you drive through there and there's snow everywhere?
I believe it's in our developer agreement on, on...
Christian Thorsted, Christian, that's, those are items that we did address in our developer agreement for the whole development, and we're looking at it, Oak Ridge 18th too, is, we wrote an agreement for that. The one thing I'll also note is if somebody's parking on the street, they have to police that themselves. Our police won't go in there and move that. I think probably the fire marshal has the right to have them move those vehicles if they're in the way, but we're not going to go out and police no parking on the street. They're going to manage that themselves.
Commissioner Olson has a question.
For you, Tim. You said we've done this before, where we've reduced the required parking?
Yes.
And it's worked out okay, not okay?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of times on a bigger place, a bigger office complex like this, we'd want to see that there is like that, maybe, what do you do if it doesn't work out? In this case, the only thing that we can do if it doesn't work out is make them either park in the back or secure a parking, a shared parking agreement, which the property in the north is also owned by the developer right now, the office complexes that face 32nd... The office complexes that face Thirty-second, they're far in surplus of the parking requirements. So they actually have done some shared parking agreements with them as opposed to coming in for this reduction when it's just one or two. That could potentially be an option we could add in there as a condition.
I have a question that's burning in my mind. How many employees on the larger building is... Are anticipated to be at that facility?
I'd like... Let the Afcon speak to that, but what we did, uh, I gave to you is how many offices there are in both combined, and there's twenty-six. There's ten in the new proposed building and sixteen in the existing building. So if you... If you advise it, you want to speak to employment?
Please state your name.
Andrew Lux. Currently, we've designed the building to split off our executive offices from the other side of the larger building. So in our side of the building, as we're referring to it, uh, there's currently set to be three employees that'll be working there, which means that there's two extra offices on that side of the building that aren't planned to be utilized right now. We kind of designed the buildings both so that we can build out now at today's cost what we might need down the road. If not, we're building at today's cost and we'll deal with it later, um, on our return and our investment, but that's our intended plan, is three for that side. And then I've currently got six or seven slated to go on the other side. A lot of our employees work off-site at other buildings in the community or in the region, or they telecommute. So they come in for a meeting once in a while, or they'll meet a client quick for something. But very seldom, I think, today, when I was in and out of the office, at most, there was three of us there. So we're a pretty low density. We have no walk-in traffic. We have no customers that come unless it's a planned, planned meeting. So we don't have any street traffic. We're not a chiropractor or anything like that.
Thank you, Mr. Lux.
Yeah, Tim, I just have one question. Again, do you feel comfortable with this?
As long as we do the agreement recorded against the property, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions of Mr. Solberg, Mr. Graham, or Mr. Lux? All right. What's your pleasure?
I make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson's second. Been moved and seconded to approve the parking reduction request for Oak Ridge Office Park as presented with the conditions outlined by Mr. Solberg. To the legal department. Any further discussion? Bearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for attending.
Thank you.
Item number three is the review of the task order number nineteen for sewer water improvement district number thirteen twenty-seven. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Commission President Dardis, members of the commission. Bear with me a second here as I get the files opened up. Uh, what you have, though, is it's a task order for a water distribution pipeline project that we are planning in the, uh, or on Ninth Street Northwest from Main Avenue up to the railroad tracks. And I'm gonna pull up a map so that you can get your bearings. And the task order will be executed underneath the master service agreement that we have in place with more engineering. The project is also, uh, currently, we applied for a cost share with the State Water Commission, so it'd be another one of the water projects where we have sixty percent funding from the State Water Commission. Forty percent would be matched locally, uh, which we would fund through our capital improvement sales tax. Okay, and right now, I'm just pulling open the map. So as you can see here, again, the project location is on Ninth Street Northwest from Main Avenue, just to the north side of the Venus F railroad tracks there. The intent is to install a twelve-inch, again, water, water distribution main line. The services that we are requesting for more engineering include not only the basic design and construction administration services, uh, but there's also some additional services included for items like the funding, basically acquiring the grant, preparing our engineer's report, so on and so forth. And then the, uh, the design and construction activities would be done at the eleven percent. So as you can see here in this table, uh, it's kind of difficult to see it on the screen, but nineteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand six hundred dollars for additional services. And then eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar... Or eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars is our construction estimate at this point. So eleven percent of that would be ninety-four thousand six hundred. So at this point, we're estimating total services to be a hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred dollars. At this point, uh, like I mentioned, we've applied for the cost share with the State Water Commission. There is a meeting that they are holding on Thursday afternoon in Bismarck that I'll attend, and we are anticipating that they will be awarding this project that funding. So, um, excited to get that. It'd be another crucial element of our water distribution system, especially in this industrial area where we've had a lot of expansion. So, uh, really want to get this project moving forward. It would be, um, something that we would construct next year. Again, uh, pending the outcome of Thursday's State Water Commission meeting and receiving that, that grant. So with that, I would be open to any questions.
Commissioners, question for Mr. Scott, please. Mr. Jurdavich?
Yeah, so the line item for funding administration, um, you know, if I go into the detail on that, most of the detail refers to managing a special assessment district, which of course, from my understanding, is not the case with this project. So could you go into detail as to what that funding administration is if it's not for special assessments?
Absolutely. Yeah, and it's... That's my fault, not catching that in here. Uh, the task order is kind of set up, we have a template, but the funding administration that they will be doing is gonna be more related to administering the grant. So when we get funding from any source, in this case, State Water Commission, there is a series of tasks that, that need to be done throughout the life of the project. And so their time and effort will be specific to those tasks. I believe I also got... I might not have it with me. Uh, but I do have a very specific spreadsheet that identifies each task with the amount of hours and then, of course, the billing rates for that. I can certainly provide that, that level of detail.
No, I mean, if you're comfortable with, with that amount, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't a mistake, because like I said, the majority of the text in that section of the document refers to special assessment.
Absolutely.
Great question. Any additional questions of Mr. Scott?
Just for review, uh, Dustin, uh, this whole project, what is the objective, the overall objective? Are we replacing old infrastructure? Are we supplementing old or existing infrastructure? Or are we improving the water distribution system? I mean, just, just for a review, it's great that we're getting state funding, but it's nice to remind us exactly why we're doing this.
Absolutely. So, uh, at this point, we... There is a segment, there's a couple of segments in here towards the south end where the existing, um, water main that's there will be replaced. Uh, but the premise behind this is really to provide adequate distribution throughout the city. So this is, and we call this a looped, or looping pipe, where we are able to feed this particular area with, with adequate, um, water supply in terms of fire suppression, um, and just the, the live demand that, especially in this area as it's grown, has been deficient. So, uh, we, we have a working water model of our entire distribution network throughout the city, and this is an area that was identified as lacking that, that loop, that, that distribution capability. So, um, over the last six years now, we've implemented a handful of projects where we've either installed sixteen-inch water mains, for example, on Main Avenue or down south on Cheyenne Street. Uh, we have corridors where we try to get these distribution mains in there, and they are, again, specifically, like, just like it's called, they're distributing the water throughout these developments. Our first area of concern is always, uh, fire suppression capabilities. And, um, so that's really the goal here, is, is we want to just enhance our, our system as a whole. It's not necessarily replacing an old line that's there. It's increasing the, the capacity of our system.
Thank you.
Additional questions from Mr. Scott? Thank you. What is your pleasure, commissioners? I'm moved to approve the task order. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. It's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdavich, second. It's been moved and seconded, seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance number eleven thir... Excuse me. Reviewing of the task order number nineteen for sewer water improvement district number thirteen twenty-seven. Is there any further discussion? Bearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Item number four is the second reading of ordinance eleven thirteen, water rates and charges. Mr. Shockley.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Commission President. Uh, before you have a very simple ordinance cleanup, uh, it is the second reading of the ordinance taking, uh, taking out the minimum service requirement of two thousand gallon purchase. Uh, it is no longer required by resolution that you have a minimum purchase of two thousand gallons of water, and so it's just removing that reference from the ordinance. Uh, for whatever reason, it's been a few months since the first reading, and the second reading didn't make it on the agenda. And, uh, from, uh, I try to monitor the agendas to see if we're getting our second readings done, and this was one of the items, uh, that got flagged up. And so we're just asking for a second reading, uh, to approve the change, uh, removing the reference to, uh, minimum purchase of two thousand. Uh, the city administrator could certainly answer any questions about what the, uh, charges are currently, but there's no longer a two thousand gallon requirement.
Mrs. Fisk, do you have comments for her?
The only thing that I would note is that, um, excuse me, I'm a little close, is that this resolution, there is no change in the existing water rates that we have at this time or sewer rates. This just incorporates... This is just the second reading, um, that was, that was missed sometime back when we did it. So if, if people are concerned, there is no change yet. We're doing a study to find out what our rates should be, so we'll come forward with that when that's ready.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner? Of Mr. Shockley or Mrs. Fisk? Your pleasure, please.
Moved to put on second reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorsted. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simmons. Been moved and seconded to put the ordinance number eleven thirteen, water rates and charges, um, into the second reading. Any further discussion? Bearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As a resolution, uh, I will call for a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next order of business is a Renaissance Zone application for Ninth and Main LLC. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Commissioner President. I think I drew the short straw. I, um, we're all kind of chipping in here, um, to take care of the economic development...
It's in capable hands.
Um, and I did say I could take care of this. I'm not sure why, but, uh, I have been working a little bit with the developer here, because this is Forum Communications First Edition, uh, and, uh, they had previously been before this body for Renaissance Zone application for the large two-hundred-thousand-square-foot, uh, storage building on the north side of this property. Um, they were unaware that they did not do it for all of the lots. Uh, so we got the application last Friday. Economic Development Advisory Committee met on Wednesday and reviewed this application. Um, I asked since then for the developer to provide us a better rendition of what they're proposing to do. I put that in your packets and I have it before you here. Um, they are, uh, actually proposing to do, I believe, fifty-six thousand square-foot building. This is intended to be sort of industrial retail. Uh, primarily, they intend to spec this out for people that will come in and want that opportunity to have a dock bay in the rear of the building. The front will service sort of an office retail component. Um, what they're proposing is forty-point-seven percent of that elevation to be faced with el... With masonry and glass. I want to note that because this is in the redevelopment quarter overlay. We had a lot of discussion on this at the EDAC board. Uh, EDAC wanted to see kind of a higher design standard. They didn't see this rendition when, uh, we talked last Wednesday, because they were not provided with it. Um, if this were not a Renaissance Zone project and somebody were simply coming in for a permit, I would look at our code. They would be required to have thirty percent of that as non-metal material. They would meet that, they would get a permit, and they would build. Um, it being a incentive program, a lot of the discussion we had at the EDAC board was, well, do we have the ability to go above and beyond? And yes, of course you do, it's an incentive program, so you have that ability to go above and beyond. So I think past discussions we had on this Forum Communications property, um, were that, you know, you wanted to see a nice corridor, and, um, so tonight, I'm providing this for you. If you want to go above and beyond, the EDAC board recommended fifty percent be provided as non-metal. Um, I think the, the catch here that you might want to take into consideration, you may or may not, I'm not sure, uh, the developer was not aware that this was not yet approved. They have since gotten a footing and foundation plan. We hadn't yet reviewed this. Um, so I don't know how far along they are in the plans. They're not here tonight. I apologize for that. I did email them and notify them that it would be reviewed tonight, but they did state that they did intend to have the forty percent, forty-point-seven percent of the elevation based with masonry and glass and provided this for your consideration. With your review, um, and, and your, uh, whatever your recommendation is, we'll go back to them and, and work with them. Uh, if you do recommend to approve it, you'll see later on that we'll have any leasing coming into this site, we'll be having their own Renaissance Zone applications. And again, this is just for one lot in here. This is the southwest, uh, lot here. So this one building that I'm circling right here, there will be another to be considered on the east of this, which would face both Ninth and Main, and then this larger building here in between what has already been approved up here and what is being considered tonight. So with that, I'm available for any questions, and I do not see the applicant here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Commissioners, questions?
Can we go back to that site plan, please? Because this is giving me heartburn looking at it. Go up to the top. That access on Ninth Street, is this an old, old site plan?
Yes.
Okay. Because, um, I know we had extended discussion on that, and that was not supposed to be...
Uh, yeah, good question, Commissioner Thorsted. Yeah, that is an outdated site plan. They are, um, proceeding... Their, the current plan right now has just the two access locations on Ninth Street Northeast. Uh, the furthest north that is shown on this particular plan was eliminated, and the, uh, access to the south, the southernmost, was positioned further north, so that is outside of the functional area of the intersection.
Mr. Solberg, for the benefit of Commissioner Thorsted's health, would you please ask the developer to modify their drawings, please?
Absolutely. When we review the permit, I assure you, Commissioner Thorsted, that, uh, the permitting department routes it through to everybody, and Dustin and myself also review that, so apologize that the, what you have before you is not very accurate.
Thank you.
I will say that, uh, Tim was pretty adamant about that and aggressive with them a couple weeks ago. They, they have provided some updated drawings, at least to my desk. I probably didn't get that over to Tim, so.
Not Dustin's fault, their fault.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any additional questions from Mr. Solberg or Mr. Scott? Commissioners?
Just a comment, uh, sitting in on that part of the, uh, EDAC meeting, this will be our one shot at dressing up or making this area of town look, looking good. I mean, it's... Once we build it, it's, it's gonna be done for forty, fifty years. Just give that some thought about the percentage of non-metal, if I have that phrased, you know, or phrased right. We don't want to make it too expensive for them, but at the same time, we want to make sure that it's something that's just gonna look good for a long, long time.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Anyone else?
If I could, Your Honor, I just wanted to kind of say a couple of comments from their application. Um, I had to correct myself. It's a sixty-three thousand square-foot building, and, uh, the building value is five and a half million dollars. Thank you.
What is your pleasure? It is your pleasure, gentlemen.
Well, let's ask the obvious question again, then. What's staff recommendation on this one?
You'll have to ask the Economic Development Director on that one. No, I, I, it's, it's one of those things where Commissioner Simmons, I really.
What did the, I guess, what did the EDC say then?
They said fifty percent. So staff recommendation, I want to just point out what I said to them. The property has already been entitled, meaning they've already been zoned light industrial. They already have a redevelopment overlay district. So if you're asking the planner, they've met that. If you're asking the Economic Development Director and you may, maybe the side of the planning department that says we want to make this beautiful community, yeah, I'd say let's increase it. But there isn't a tremendous investment and we're at a point in the game here where I think the commission is probably the one who has to say, is this good enough or is it not good enough, you know? And so it's hard for me to say how I feel one way or the other. And maybe other people that are taking part of this duty have some comments on that, like Tina or Larry or anyone else.
Do you want to be satisfied with the EDC committee, which is Brad, right, and you too? Who's on the EDC committee now? You, so what are your, I mean, are you, are you satisfied with this, Brad? On your shoulders.
Well, I had to leave at the end of the, I couldn't, I couldn't stay for the whole discussion before they got into it, so I I guess I'd have to rely on those that were there to know why we went.
They were really struggling with what to say and they felt kind of arbitrary and we threw out, you know, you have that ability to do something, and that's when they came to the, well, that's two fifty percent. And at that point, we didn't know how much their percentage was because they hadn't yet submitted this. They had really an incomplete application. It was really last minute because they didn't realize that they hadn't done it yet, so.
So how quick do we need to move forward on this? How quick do they want to get the?
Well, I certainly don't think it'd be a bad thing if you felt like you wanted to sit on it for two weeks.
Well, we send it back to the EDC committee and have them go through what you just did now and let them see what they didn't see before. And so we get a better understanding, I guess, of where they're coming from.
Well, my suggestion is, is that, that we can, we can pass the the Renaissance Zone application with the conditions of fifty percent non-metal front. And the question here isn't whether or not we're allowing a Renaissance Zone on this building. That's not, that's, that's not the question at hand. It's whether or not the application should builders should be brought into the discussion of forty percent versus fifty percent.
Yeah, that would actually be.
Because we're going to want this building to match the second building that's going to be done at the corner.
That, that would be a very fair motion to do and then, you know, if they have an issue with that, if they can't make that work, if they've already ordered something or whatever, they could come back before you and discuss that.
So there's my motion then.
That sounds good.
I will second it.
Do you have that down? Yes.
You're amazing, Courtney.
Already got it.
So if there's any discussion, Commissioner President, I would just, I'll forward that to them tomorrow and we'll together kind of work out how to come before you if we have to again.
Thank you for taking, helping with the lead on this.
I'm not lead, I've just had to talk tonight.
You're always in the lead as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Solberg. So you're doing a nice job. It's extenuating circumstances and dealing with this. So to all staff, thank you for everybody taking a piece of this. We appreciate it. So Mr. Simmons has made a motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdavich. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Renaissance Zone application with the condition of a fifty percent non-metal front. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of businesses, item F, that was moved down from the consent agenda at my request to item number six. And that's the approving the contract and contractors bond in sewer water storm and street improvement for district thirteen twenty-five. I requested this of Mr. Scott to again share once more with the public as to what this contract's dollar amount was and what was involved. We have approved this already, but I just wanted it stated for the public one more time of what we're going to do at thirteen twenty-five.
Well, yeah, thank you, Commissioner President Dardis. I believe this was John's item, but I'm going to pull up that dollar amount real quick.
Well, you beat him to the podium, so it's yours. Again, this was brought up to the regular agenda at my request. Anytime that I think that we're spending substantial taxpayer dollars, I want it restated time and again what those tax dollars are, what area of the city it's being spent in, so the public is continuously informed and if, if someone doesn't go into the agenda and they're just watching us on low-circuit TV, they aren't going to know that. So thank you for indulging me.
Commissioner President Dardis, members of the commission, looks like we awarded the contract to KPH in the amount of seven hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
All right. So as a reminder, when we do a resolution, we're going to, I'm once again going to call for a roll call vote, so. Are there any questions of Mr. Scott? This, again, we approved this two weeks ago.
Yes, at the September sixteenth meeting.
In Oak Ridge, is that where it's at?
Yes. Yeah, Oak Ridge, eighteenth.
I'm sorry. Mr. Shockley.
Mr. President, you need a motion and second to approve the contract and the bonds. Last, last meeting, you approved a word of the bid, but there's one additional step of actually awarding the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Any questions from Mr. Scott? All right.
So we need a motion on this, so moved.
And the bond. Please include that in the minutes. Approving the contract and contractors bond in sewer water storm and street improvement district thirteen twenty-five. Is there a second? Commissioner Thorsted seconds. Moved by Commissioner Olson. Been moved and seconded to approve. Are there any further discussion? Did I say Olson? My apologies. Commissioner Thorsted seconded. Hearing the end, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Again, I will call for a roll call vote, being it's a resolution for.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. Next order of businesses, item number six, construction updates. Mr. Scott?
Thank you once again, Commissioner President Dardis and members of the commission. And just with the concern of Commissioner Thorsted sleeping tonight, I did want to pull up that site plan back on Ninth and Main there. Just again, to demonstrate that the two access points on the Ninth are shown. This first one, the southernmost access is out of the functional area of that intersection. And again, that furthest north one up by the railroad tracks was eliminated.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Absolutely. And so on to the construction updates. You know, usually get into Cheyenne Street, but before I do that, I before I do that, I did want to start with the exciting news of we flushed the proverbial toilet. We're, we're, we're sending some wastewater to Fargo. Start as of, as of Thursday. Our sewer foreman, Dane Franky, was out on Thursday with, with Moore Engineering and Fargo and their consultants to do a trial run and just make sure all the valves were turning, all the meters were calibrated. And things went well. And within, I believe, an hour, they had everything functioning and water was flowing. And so the decision was made out there to just keep, keep the water going. And so I know Melissa prepared a nice write-up. And so I imagine that's going to hit the press here and, but again, it's exciting. We're sending a million gallons a day at this point.
How long will it take to get all of the stuff out of the lagoons then?
So we, the, the next, bingo. That's not as simple as just a simple flush. No, we don't get the dis. It's a very long flush system. So the, the process at this point, you know, we're still, we haven't come to the commission with the formal game plan. We have a document prepared that we are hoping to hold a brown bag session in November to walk through this document of how we are going to go about decommissioning our lagoons. We have several options identified in there. I think the one that we're leaning towards is the, the most equitable in terms of the capital costs involved, which is to rely upon air drying. So we'll draw down all the water and then rely upon Mother Nature to, to dry up the sludge that's at the bottom of the cell. All goes well. The environmental tests pass, so on and so forth. We can cover that sludge with a, with a crop and ultimately get it to a point where it can just be filled in and, and we can move on. Unfortunately, when you depend on the weather in this part of the country, things like rain can slow that process down. So we might get then into say, a second alternative, which is to start moving it around. If we really have to, especially from an environmental standpoint, if we add some solids in there that are overly contaminated, we might have to do some removal and long-term placement of that really, really bad sludge. So. So stay in tune with that. I, again, I'm hoping for November where we can sit down and go through Moore Engineering's document on on our wastewater system and more specifically on how we're going to go about decommissioning our lagoons. We're still hopeful that we can be fully decommissioned in five to ten years. But again, that starts to depend on what process we rely on. If we want to spend money, we can certainly get it done sooner than if we want to try to save money. So the, again, more, more to come once we can have a good sit-down session and walk through all the options and and the associated costs with that, so.
Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. Scott. We make light of the situation, but I think we really should publicly thank the Fargo City Commission for assisting us in transferring these very peculiar products that we're giving them now. But, but seriously, we should thank them because without them, we, well.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'd be in a hole. So.
Also, Commissioner Thorsted?
Just a comment. The diversion that's planned hopefully in under construction here in about a year. I think a lot of that good amount of that dirt was going to be dedicated to West Fargo to use for filling these in. Will that affect the schedule or will you just stockpile it until it fits our schedule? I mean, is there some coordination that will have to be done there? Be a shame to haul it, dump it, and then turn around and have to move it again. So you know, as far as Commissioner Olson's question regarding timing, I think they're talking about a six-year roughly build on the diversion channel. So it would be nice if we could coordinate somehow if we're going to be getting some of that excess soil from them, dirt.
Absolutely. Good question, Commissioner Thorsted. So a year and a half ago or so, the FM Diversion Authority was putting together the technical requirements for that package, which is going to go then to the P three where the candidate that gets that job will implement the, their technical requirements into their final designs and then start construction. We were successful in getting that into the technical requirements. Of course, there were a handful of other things that we also asked, but very specifically, we did want as much dirt as they could give to coordinate that with filling in the, the lagoon cells once they're decommissioned. Coordination will certainly be key. Timing is everything. We anticipate, you know, hopefully to, to start with one or two cells in the next, in the first year or two and it's just going to be kind of a balancing act for coordination challenge to, if dirt becomes available, are we ready to accept it? Because yes, we don't want to have them stockpile it somewhere and then move it again. Worst case scenario is we get out of sync and, and that has to happen, but again, kind of more to come on that. There'll be a better discussion on that, I imagine, when we, when we can meet and, and hopefully November to have a brown bag on, on this.
Obviously save money if we can coordinate that. So again, we haul it once, drop it once and it's done. You know, and that, that is a benefit to the city of West Fargo and the taxpayers if we can get some of that dirt for keep it free, hopefully free. So.
Absolutely.
Inexpensive then, Frank.
Okay. Well, I will then move on to the Cheyenne Street project, which again, a lot of media coverage on this, as everyone by now should be aware. A lot of the interchange is open. The biggest challenge at this point is all of the activities that still need to happen. Some of the median work, striping, so on and so forth, that is causing almost a daily change to the traffic patterns in and around the interchange area itself. So, you know, good news in that it, it finished a couple weeks early. The complication at this point is, is purely from just navigating through the corridor from a public perspective. It changes daily. And people just need to stay ahead of that, be aware, drive slow, obey the cones. But again, great news that they are ahead of schedule despite the challenging weather we've had. Here's an area looking at the diversion bridge. Again, the northbound concrete is in. The pedestrian railing should arrive by next week. The contractor's still working on a couple sewer connections here and there and again, just some of that miscellaneous work, but for the most part, from the diversion bridge through the interchange, the main line paving, that bulk of that work is, is done. So. Here we are looking at Cheyenne Street and Thirty-second Avenue. Again, they're continuing some of the miscellaneous activities in and out of that area. And then Segment Three. Segment Three is, is not ahead of schedule, but at the same time, I, I think we're still tracking that it's on schedule, if anything, maybe within a week of, of delay. The contractor is hopeful that all of the main line paving can be done this week, if not next, so that we can get a lot of the traffic opened up. We do have a, a bit of a challenge with the Thirty-eighth Avenue intersection that is supposed to be signalized. The signal system is delayed. So we are looking at options to install a temporary signal system there for when we are open. But again, you know, the good news, despite the weather challenges, we are at least on schedule, if not, again, a, a few days to a week at, at the most at this point. In, in terms of getting the bulk of the work completed, so. Some of the other projects, one of the ones I wanted to certainly point at, the second from the bottom here, the water distribution loop. I've just mentioned the Ninth Street Northwest project that we're pulling after right now. We did start and awarded a contract earlier this summer for a water distribution main that runs along the fairgrounds, across the interstate and a diversion to the south side. As well as there is a water distribution main is Ninth Street Northeast, basically along that Forum Communications site. At, at this point, that project is experiencing delays because the diversion has a lot of water in it. So we are, we're not necessarily in a hurry to get this done. So we're taking our time, hoping the, the water will subside in the diversion within the next week, once they stop releasing out of Bald Hill. And then progress will start on that project. And, and again, the I, I'd say the, the boring activities to get underneath the interchange or the interstate and the diversion are, are going to be the most challenging components of that. And, and we're hopeful that once the water goes down again, we can really start making progress and if any challenges arise, start to, start to deal with those. I mentioned the, of course, flushing the toilet. And there is going to be a special meeting with our Cheyenne Street contractors in the next day or two ahead of our weekly meetings that we meet with them on Thursday afternoons. We want to really sit down and understand where they are at from a schedule standpoint, anticipate anything that's out of the ordinary and then deal with that Thursday afternoon when we have our weekly meetings with them. So again, at this point, we're hopeful that they're, at least Segment Three is on schedule. Of course, Segment Two is a little bit ahead of schedule, but we really want to start locking in what is the final final. We're done. And I do want to preface that there will be carryover work into next year. Of course, all the, the seeding that needs to take place and, and some of the other punch list type items that will have to wait until next spring, that's been anticipated throughout the duration of the project. So nothing out of the ordinary there, but. the duration of the project. So nothing out of the ordinary there, but we're really going to start getting aggressive with more frequent meetings with them to really understand the schedule and, and if we do learn anything different, we can communicate that back to not only the commission but the public as well. I guess with that, I will answer any questions.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott? You made a point earlier that a lot of communication's been going out from our communications department, it as well as our friends at the newspaper, Forum and/or Pioneer. And we owe a great deal of thanks to all of those involved in keeping the public informed and, and aware of what's happening. So thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Melissa, for the jobs that you've been doing for us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
City Administrators Report, Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening, Commissioners, President, and Commissioners. I have a few items for you. First of all, I want to let you know that Thunder Coffee has their grand opening tomorrow. It goes from seven AM to seven PM. So if you haven't been there, you got to go there and try their coffee and their homemade goodies that they have there. They're really good. Chief Yonkey will be on WDAY's morning show tomorrow to do an interview between five thirty and six thirty regarding the upcoming Student Success Forum on social media. The actual Student Success Forum will be held from seven to eight thirty PM at the Dakota Medical Foundation tomorrow. And it will feature Chief Yonkey, SRO Rhonda Jorgensen, Superintendent Beth Floodie, West Fargo Public School Counselor Dana Strand, and, and that's it. So if you're interested, please consider attending. Harwood Elementary was announced as a National Blue Ribbon School. A West Fargo Public School Elementary School has been named in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and now nineteen. The Downtown Rebranding Survey is available on the website for public input until October eleventh. So encourage people to go on there and to give us their thoughts and ideas. This one's a little ways out, but coming up in November on the twelfth and thirteenth will be the North Dakota Legislative Council meetings. They're going to be discussing the legacy fund earnings. These meetings will be held on Tuesday, Tuesday, November twelfth at six thirty PM and Wednesday, November thirteenth at eight thirty AM. And they will be held at NDSU at the McGovern Alumni Center. So if you'd like information on that or have it dropped on your calendar, get ahold of Courtney and she'll help everybody out because that's what she does. I have a request. The report on the Expo Center for the City of West Fargo that we had requested, that is about complete. And we wanted to arrange to have David Stone come to the commission, but we also wanted to have the, the Fair Board and any of the public that were interested. So my question is if you would consider having a special meeting on October twenty-second from five to seven, just so that we can meet with, get everybody in one room and hear what they have to say and, and just get consideration and input on, on the report itself.
I agree, Tina. I think to have it during a regular meeting would be too much going on. I think, I definitely agree. I think we should have it on the twenty-second. That would give everybody ample time and for the citizens to come as well.
I'd request that all the commissioners check your schedules. I don't want to have the meeting without all of our commissioners present. Works. You can check mine.
Okay, so we will set up the special meeting for October twenty-second from five to seven. I'll coordinate with Melissa and we'll be working with the Fair Board and so on and so forth. Once we get that final report, there was a couple changes and he sent it back today for us to review. Once I get that completed, I will send it out to all of you so you have plenty of time to review it and look at it and get your questions ready and be prepared for when Mr. Stone comes to visit on this. One important note, tomorrow night, Planning and Zoning, has an item on their agenda. They are discussing establishment of a downtown mixed-use and an entertainment-mixed-use zoning district. Two separate types of districts. Tim's put a lot of work into this and he's bringing it forward to Planning and Zoning for the initial discussion. So if you're interested, that, that should be a pretty good discussion. Today, Dustin, Jim Larson, and I met with Casserole Water in the City of Fargo to talk about the Red River Valley water supply allocations and what part we will all play in that. And Jim will be attending the meeting in October as I will be gone. And if you start looking for people at City Hall and you find that they're not available, it's because we've moved their offices. We are solely trying to move people around to make more space for new employees coming in in the beginning of the year. We're going to be utilizing the old commission chambers. And as we get it finalized where everyone's going to land, I will make sure I get it to you guys, but it looks right now like the engineering department will take over the old courtroom. And then we'll just keep moving around from there. You won't have to move, Bernie. Courtney won't have to move either. But after that, there's just about everybody else.
Leave my office, you can have it.
Excuse, no, no, we're fine. We've worked around it. We're all doing good. So is there anything that you have for me? Thank you very much. Oh, one more note. I'm sorry. I will be out of the office next week, but I will be able to be reached by email and by phone. Thank you.
Hey.
I have one thing to.
Commissioner Olson, please.
MetroCog will be sending a invite for an open house at their new, newly remodeled office space. I think that's next week on the seventeenth. I'll just be looking for that as to be for everybody, all commissioners, whomever city staff too, to come check out the new digs.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else that commissioners like to bring up? Non-agenda items? Commissioner Simmons? Move to adjourn. Is there a second, please?
Second.
And moved and second to adjourn. We stand adjourned.